And I take it that taxes are all up to date.
They don't go to like forty hours for about two weeks or so in a two to three weeks.
Just every time an off but.
The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order.
My mic's on.
My mic's on.
No, mine's on.
Meeting will come to order. Can you hear me?
I'm not hearing you still.
Nope. I'll move the mic closer. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Looks at me who come to order at seven P M. And if the secretary please call roll.
Dennis Sabolski.
Here.
Kendra Barberina.
Here.
Bob Dorshavitz.
Here.
James Berry.
Here.
Tim Boyd.
Here.
Gail Greger here and John Itzel.
Here.
Thank you. And do we have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one correction that Gail Greger is the secretary and I'm no longer the secretary. And with that change, I move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Their support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Itzel to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the approval of our last meeting is deferred until our next meeting next week. And is there anyone here that wishes to make a public comment on a non-agenda item? So if you're here for the racing track, this isn't the time to do it. We're gonna do some explanations and presentations before we open that up.
Could you speak louder?
Okay, I'll try. Alright, with that, we'll open the, we will, next agenda item is Application twenty-four sixty-four, the Northville Downs of Plymouth. And I'm going to ask Ms. Howe, who is one of our planning consultants, to read her report. And we've asked her to go through the report very carefully. We think she's done a wonderful job explaining the process so that everyone here will understand what we're expecting to do tonight and what standards will be used in making that decision. So with that, Ms. Howe.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. Trustee Dorshavitz, could you please pull up the?
The mic's down?
Okay. Trustee Dorshavitz, could you please pull up the presentation? Alright. I'd like to start with this presentation to just orient everyone to the project and the proposed scope. And then we'll get into the specific review. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of Five Mile Road in Ridge Road. This is the northern boundary of Plymouth Township. To the north of Five Mile is Northville Township. And the project site in question that's shown on the screen there within the red boundary is a hundred and twenty-five acres. The majority of the site is wetlands or woodlands. Approximately forty-one percent of the site will remain as that. What you can see on the screen right now is in blue on the west edge of the property, that delineates the area that was zoned public lands back in two thousand and sixteen. And the township rezoned that property from industrial to public lands in order to ensure that development along Johnson Creek, which runs along that western boundary, would remain as unbuilt public land for recreation and natural conservation. The remaining portion of the site that's shown in gray, that is zoned industrial. And no zoning change is proposed as part of this project. The applicant is requesting a planned unit development, which is a P U D. And that is an overlay that would go over this project area for the proposed racetrack. The next slide shows the previously approved site plan for the site. This is the Ridge Five Corporate Park. This was approved several years ago by the township as the site has long been planned for industrial. There were potentially eight different industrial users that were planned for the site that would occupy forty-five acres. So this was approved several years ago. It did not come to fruition. And the applicant has withdrawn this project. However, a good portion of the site was cleared and improvements were made in accordance with that approved site plan. So those two detention ponds that you see were installed and created. The Boulevard Road off of Ridge Road was created and installed. And there was also other utilities that were installed on the site. So the site is partially developed today with that infrastructure. The next slide shows the proposed development by the Carlo Brothers for Northville Downs, represented by P E A Engineering tonight. The site consists of a half-mile harness racing track you can see kind of in the center of the site. About five thousand square feet of outdoor grandstand areas. That would include four hundred and eighty seats. Directly adjacent to the grandstand is the racing building itself, which is approximately twenty-three thousand square feet. There's also a single-story horse barn directly to the right of that, to the east, at thirty-five thousand square feet approximately. And a one-story as well, three thousand square-foot maintenance building that's directly to the south of the horse barn. There's also several parking and loading areas. And you can see the public nature trail that also runs along Johnson Creek. That was part of the original proposal. That has been preserved as part of this project as well. And there's a small parking lot that's proposed off of Ridge Road. Correct? That allows for access to that nature path. I'd like to make it clear that this is the development that is proposed to the township at this time. There is no casino building. Should the applicant decide to propose such a facility in the future, that would require a separate review process and approval, a public hearing with the township. So this is the development, what's shown on the screen, that is proposed for consideration by the Planning Commission this evening. The next slide shows the key steps of the planned unit development process. Since this is a planned unit development, there are additional meetings that are required by the township to ensure a transparent process. So we're currently at that very first step. And that includes a public hearing this evening. And then ultimately, a recommendation by this body to the Township Board of Trustees. So the P U D option is whether or not the proposed project meets eight different eligibility criteria. It is not a site plan. So the second, the next slide shows the site plan portion of the process. And there are several meetings that would need to take place before even getting to that stage. So again, just like to make it clear that tonight's discussion is for the P U D option and not for the site plan details that would come later should this project move to another step. The next slide shows the eight different eligibility criteria that a P U D must reflect in order to be considered as an option for the township. And that is the purpose of the meeting tonight is to consider these eight different eligibility criteria for the horse racing track. So some of these criteria include, does it meet the intent of the planned unit development as a flexible development tool? Does it provide a community benefit that would otherwise be unachievable under conventional zoning? Does it further the goals of the township's master plan? These are the different eight criteria that the commission will discuss tonight. And as a planning commission, this body is charged with looking at the planning and zoning implications of a project. Policy considerations are for elected officials, the Township Board of Trustees. So it is not the purpose of tonight's meeting to discuss policy related to animal ethics, financial considerations of the development, or the community benefits agreement. The community benefits agreement is a separate agreement that would be considered by the Board of Trustees and not the Planning Commission as they are responsible for the zoning of the development. Alright, so are there any questions from the Planning Commissioners at this point regarding the eligibility criteria before I move into the specific review or the process? Okay. Alright. Trustee Dorshavitz, if you'd like to pull the review up, we could go through those page by page, please.
Is it on, on the packet, in the packet?
Yes, yes, this is exactly it. Yes. So again, the proposal this evening is for the half-mile harness racetrack, for the grandstand, the racing building, and then the single-story horse barn and maintenance building, parking area, and the nature trail along Johnson Creek. There is no casino proposed. The first eligibility criteria that the Planning Commission is to consider starts on page four of our review.
Sorry, I, okay.
You're good.
Here we go.
So that first eligibility standard is, is the project in conformity with the spirit and intent of the P U D option. And the P U D option is intended to permit flexibility in the regulation of land development, to encourage innovation in land use and variety in design, in the layout and type of structures constructed, to achieve economy and efficiency in the use of land, natural resources, and the provision of public services and utilities, and to encourage useful open space and pedestrian and non-vehicular interconnectivity, and provide a more desirable living environment with housing, employment, recreation, and/or commercial opportunities particularly suited to the needs of the residents of the township. Based on this intent standard, we find that the project is consistent with the intent of the P U D, as it, A, provides for the contiguous, or the conservation of contiguous open spaces to the benefit of the larger community. It includes a public nature path. It makes efficient use of the existing utility infrastructure that has already been installed on the site. And it provides a unique multi-use entertainment venue for the benefit of the township. There's also green technologies that the applicant is incorporating, which are not requirements of any ordinance of the township and are discussed elsewhere in our review. Are there any comments regarding the first eligibility standard by the commission? The second eligibility criteria of the P U D is that the project would generate a recognizable and material benefit to the ultimate users of the project, but also the community, where such a benefit would otherwise be unlikely without the P U D. And it's important to note that any monetary or financial benefits resulting from a project is outside of the scope of that evaluation. Those are for the consideration of the Board of Trustees. So we do find that there are benefits that would be unlikely achieved through just conventional zoning or through the development of this site as an industrial park. The first is that this venue provides for entertainment amenity. The township has a joint recreation and parks master plan with the city of Plymouth. And one of the goals in that plan is to continue to seek opportunities and partnerships with public and private landowners, excuse me, for the development of additional turf field sport facilities in the Plymouth community. The developer has offered the township use of the track for events such as soccer tournaments, outdoor movies, fireworks, et cetera, and to install turf grass on the inside of the racetrack to better accommodate those events. So the proposed project will function not only as a horse track, but also as a community space for such recreation. Another one of the goals of the master plan is to install a network of non-motorized pathway systems throughout the township to improve pedestrian and cyclist safety and mobility. The non-motorized path that's proposed along the perimeter of the wetlands and Johnson Creek, along with a pathway along Ridge Road up to Five Mile, will achieve that goal. The pathway will be installed by the applicant at their cost. We are requesting that the pathway be paved to ensure that it's easier to maintain in the long run for the township, as the township will ultimately be responsible for that maintenance. We're also recommending that that pathway be paved so that it is more accessible to all users. Does anyone have any questions on the second eligibility criteria?
How is the pathway going to connect up to Northville Township?
So currently, if you'd like to go to the site plan. The pathway has, there's access to the pathway off of Ridge Road. And there's the parking lot there that will provide access for the path to run along Johnson Creek. But also a sidewalk pathway will be installed along Ridge Road that will connect up to Northville.
So you would cross at the intersection?
Yes.
Okay. It's not like a Frogger?
No, you would need to cross the road there at Five Mile, yes.
And the pathway is a self-contained pathway to that particular tract of land. It doesn't connect with other pathways, nature pathways, or does it?
Should the intersection be improved and the land directly north of Five Mile on the Northville Township side be improved? There's a slight gap there today. That would then connect to the Northville Trail system. That would be an ultimate goal of both townships to accomplish and bridge that gap.
Do we see a mechanical of the, of the site plan to show that path?
I didn't hear you, John.
Well, could we look at a mechanical of that site plan so we can see the path?
Did I go to the township website to pull that up, or?
Yes, or it's in the packet.
It is in the packet?
Page twenty-five, trustee.
So the pathway along Johnson Creek is here?
Correct.
And then what would happen when you got to the end of it?
It does terminate there where your cursor is, because that is the C S X Railroad.
Oh, that's the track.
Mm-hmm. But it will loop around, along Johnson Creek, around that detention pond, and back out to Ridge Road, to that parking lot. And then there's a pathway along Ridge.
Ah, okay. Okay, I misunderstood that. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
The pathway being on the east side of Ridge?
Is there a pathway on the east side of Ridge?
Yeah, well, I know there's not right now, but the planned pathway would be on the west side or the east side?
Both.
Okay.
As development occurs in the area, yes. Can I move on to the third eligibility criteria?
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay. What page is that again?
Uh, page five.
Five?
Alright, the third eligibility criteria is that the site either contains natural assets such as large strands of trees, significant views, wetlands, woodlands, that would be in the best interest of the community to preserve. Or if the site is already developed and absent of those natural features that the township would prefer to preserve, this requirement can be satisfied by the creation of additional natural features or community amenities. So as this site was previously approved for an industrial development and was improved, the land was partially cleared and infrastructure installed. There are limitations to what can be preserved versus what is there today. Forty-one point seven percent of the total site is wetlands and woodlands, and that will remain. There is no impact proposed to those existing areas. The development largely is taking place within the area that has already been cleared for the previously approved industrial park. However, the applicant is proposing additional landscaping beyond what's required by code. And they are proposing some sustainability features with this development that are not required in the zoning ordinance. So for instance, they are proposing solar panels to be incorporated, geothermal heating of the site, and grass pavers for the surface of the overflow parking lots in order to minimize the impervious surfaces.
What are grass pavers?
Would you like to explain that, Mike, for how they'll be constructed for the parking lot?
Yeah, township engineer. The grass pavers typically, they support heavy vehicles, but they have the look of an impervious greener area. It can be driven upon without emergency vehicles sinking into the wet soils.
What are they, what are they made out of?
Well, there's a variety of options available. I think some of the popular ones are a synthetic material, that it's more of a ring that can be, soils can be put inside of it. There's several different available. And I, I would expect the applicant to submit something for review during the engineering process.
Thank you.
As this is a site that has been improved and already graded, we are making a couple recommendations in our report to improve the environmental quality of the site. So one of those recommendations is that the existing detention ponds be supplemented with native seed mix to improve the stormwater infiltration and plant diversity of the site. We're recommending that a rain garden be installed with educational signage in a visible location on the property. There are several areas of the site that because it was previously cleared, consists of just dirt, topsoil. And we're recommending that those would be seeded and restored back to lawn area until a future phase was proposed for the development. Are there any questions regarding the third eligibility standard?
I do have a question. The, the development that was there, the Ridge Five, now that consisted of eight condominium units, right, that was proposed to be built. And I would imagine that each of those built out would have a lot of pavement associated with that.
Correct.
Would I be correct in assuming that this project's gonna have less pavement than the previous project?
Yes.
So would they be more or less concerned about runoff into Johnson Creek as a result?
This project is resulting in less runoff into Johnson Creek than the proposed, previously approved industrial park. Yes, the township's ordinance for industrial sites does not have a maximum lot coverage standard. So the entire site, the majority of the site could be completely paved or a building footprint located on the site. As opposed to the P U D, the township has some additional flexibility in the design of the site.
So there's a triangular piece to this property that's in the northwest corner. Can you explain what would happen with that? It's kind of been divided by train tracks.
That is, that is the ninth unit. So when this development was originally proposed to the township as the industrial park, there were eight units that were contiguous on the site. And then there was the ninth unit that is separated by the train tracks and bordered by Ridge and Five Mile. That triangular piece is not included as part of this development and is separate. So it is not for consideration this evening. It is not part of the P U D. It is still zoned industrial, and any future development scenario would need to come before the township.
And then this road here is where the eight units are, and that'll go away. That road'll go away.
Correct. The majority of the road will go away. The Boulevard entrance onto Ridge will remain as part of this project.
Okay, so that's where the entry into Ridge will, will remain in that spot?
Correct. Alright, the fourth eligibility criteria is regarding the protection of any historic or cultural resources or buildings with significant architecture that's worth preservation or enhancement. So as the site was cleared, but there were no structures built, there are no existing cultural or historical structures to protect. We find this eligibility criteria does not directly apply. The fifth eligibility criteria largely has to do with the proposed use and is it harmonious with the existing and proposed land patterns of the adjacent properties? And is it compatibility with the future land use plan and the adopted master plan of the township? And on page seven of our review, we include two snapshots from the zoning map, which governs the allowable uses in the township, and the future land use map, which governs how the community is projected to be built out in the future. And you can see the bottom map, the zoning, the site and the adjacent sites to the east and the west have been zoned and planned for industrial uses. And the top portion, the future land use map, the site and the adjacent uses to the east and west are continued to be proposed for light industrial. This use today with the recreational and sport and entertainment component is not industrial in nature. However, this is less intensive than a proposed industrial park. And we find that it can meet this eligibility criteria for compatibility with the zoning, the surrounding zoning, and the planned development of the area. We also took a look at the proposed height and massing of the proposed structures that would be part of the racetrack. Both of the barn and the maintenance building, as I mentioned earlier, are single-story structures. They are no taller than twenty-five feet in height, which is shorter in height than a typical industrial building. The main grandstand building is proposed currently at forty-six feet in height, which is similar in size to other industrial buildings, and it does not exceed the maximum allowable height of the P U D district. The design of the facility itself would be finalized should this project move forward to the site plan development phase.
So forty-six feet, what is that? If that were an apartment building, how many stories would that typically be? What's a story?
A residential story is gonna be between ten and twelve.
Ten and twelve. So if it were like an office building, that would be the similar height to like a three or four-story office building?
Correct, yeah. And similar industrial buildings in the township are between thirty-five and fifty feet. Are there any questions regarding? Are there any questions regarding eligibility criteria number five? Alright, the sixth standard is that the proposed use shall be such that traffic to and from the site will not be hazardous or adversely impact adjacent properties and conflict with the normal traffic flow of the general area. In reviewing this aspect, the township must consider conflicts with pedestrian traffic and the relationship of the site to major thoroughfares that are identified in the township's master plan and intersections. Both Ridge Road and Five Mile are designated as major thoroughfares in the township and for Northville Township. In terms of the pedestrian network, a sidewalk will be provided along Ridge Road. We're recommending that that would be increased to eight feet in width to be consistent with the non-motorized system that is in Northville Township. There's also the pathway along the Johnson Creek, which would be the public amenity. And again, we're recommending that that be eight feet in width and also paved so that it would be completely accessible to all users of the public space. The vehicular network in terms for regular vehicle, private vehicle traffic will make use of the existing Boulevard entrance off of Ridge Road that has already been installed for the previous development. The fire department is requiring a second access road, and the applicant has agreed to installing that secondary access off Ridge Road to use primarily in the event of an emergency. There are still some design aspects that need to be figured out with the fire access road, and particularly where it loops to around the facility. And that is one of the conditions of approval that we are recommending. Are there any questions regarding that sixth eligibility criteria?
Could we look at the site plan again and get an idea of, assuming there'd be a lot of drop-offs, what that pathway would be? Main entrance to drop-off and then back out for those that aren't staying?
What page again?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, and I'm gonna come back to town, remember town.
Now Laura, I know that the township is pursuing a $25 million improvement on Five Mile Road. Which is not directly associated with this development, correct? That was something proposed for the Michigan Technology Corridor.
Correct.
But that would assist with the traffic, any potential traffic issues if that were to be approved.
Okay, yes.
So what did you wanna see in the site plan?
I was trying to see if someone was to drop people off at the main clubhouse facility.
Want me to zoom in on it?
Well, how they would get in and out, and where the turnaround or the send-back it would be. As it relates to the entrance.
Yeah, it would be within that parking lot to the right there of the cursor, yep.
In that lot, right there. Got it.
So Bob, can you show us where the secondary access road would be, is gonna be?
So it would come off right where the, that small parking lot is?
Up or down?
Uh, right there in the middle of the street.
Oh, right here.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so it's not shown in on this plan. The applicant has agreed to providing this, but it would, it would run in from about that point off of Ridge Road.
So the point of this parking lot is to give people access to this walking trail, right?
And then that, would that road run to the main parking lot then, Laura?
It would need to. Right now, the applicant has, has proposed it running to the east side of the racetrack where the maintenance building is, which would be very convenient for those needing to use the, to pull in horses and use the trailer parking that's directly to the north of that. However, that still doesn't satisfy completely the fire department's evacuation concerns 'cause it's still leading to the same kind of bottleneck area. So that's a, that's a consideration we'd have to give for a future revision.
Go back. Anybody wanna see anything else on this? No?
Alright, the seventh eligibility criteria is that the intensity of uses that are associated with the project, such as noise, vibration, odor, glare, reflection of light, hours of operation, and other external effects which would normally be a product of the proposed use, shall be compatible with the existing land uses of the abutting properties and ensure stability and order of development, as indicated in the future land use plan and adopted master plan. So again, the proposed use of the horse track facility is less intensive than the, than a planned use of an industrial development on the site, which is provided for in the township's master plan. However, as a racetrack, there are considerations to be given. The applicant notes that the project would have the following hours. So the simulcasting hours would be, hours of operation would be seven days a week from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and then the live harness racing events would be two days a week from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. only. That does not incorporate other hours of operation that the township may wish to use the facility for other community events or sporting events, but the hours of operation of the horse track facility itself. We note on page nine that should the PUD option be approved, that a maximum allowable decibel level would need to be incorporated into their PUD contract with the Board of Trustees. Lighting is also a consideration regarding external factors. The applicant did provide a preliminary photometric plan, and then since that time, a revised photometric plan. And in many respects, especially related to the parking areas and the pedestrian areas, the lighting is minimal. It's well beyond, or well below township standards. However, the track itself does have some concerns regarding the illumination levels and the height of the light poles that are proposed at 50 feet. So that is something that we would want to revisit closer during the PUD process with the site plan, should it get to that development phase. Are there any questions regarding the eligibility standard number seven? I should note, we asked the applicant to clarify if liquor would be sold on the premises, and they are seeking a liquor license that would be available to the public during those hours of operation.
Which two days a week will the live harness racing take place? Is that Friday and Saturday?
I don't, I don't have those details.
Excuse me, my name's John Carlo. Thank you all for taking some time today to listen to us, but currently we're racing on Fridays and Saturdays. That is a moving target. There are plenty of people outside of the facility that are watching and wagering in different locations like we do at our location, so finding that gap in that window where our product can be best received is what we'll be shooting for. Friday and Saturday right now are our target days.
Thank you.
Are ready to move on to the last eligibility criteria? Okay. The eighth standard is that in the consideration of a site that has previously been developed, that this proposed PUD would facilitate redevelopment of the site so that as to improve the, an aging or functionally obsolete site, and create a substantial benefit to the township for that redevelopment. So as was previously mentioned, approximately 50% of the site was cleared and improved as part of that industrial park. However, since the applicant has withdrawn that application for the industrial park, the site has sat vacant, and while it's not functionally obsolete, it is not, it is not providing any benefit to the township, including any tax benefit. Under the proposed project, this PUD option, the site would be put to a viable use, and the wetlands and woodlands portion of the site would be preserved as a community benefit. And the proposed walking trail would serve a public, as a public amenity. While we also note that there's no cultural significance that could be preserved with this project, we, we do know that the site has been used for illegal dumping in the past, in, in the past couple recent months, and that the redevelopment of the site would eliminate that concern for the township. So those...
So is it, is it necessary that the commission find that all eight criteria are met? Or is it, are these all factors that weigh more or less into a, into a judgment?
All the factors do weigh in if they're applicable. So for instance, I think the eligibility standard number four is the provision that talks about the historical or cultural preservation. That standard is not as applicable to this. However, the commission must find that these eight standards do reflect the, that the proposed project does reflect these eight standards, and that it can, can be met. Page 10 of our planner's report provides our recommendation.
I have a question before moving on. Under item nine, when it comes down to ownership, would this be a change in ownership, or would the existing owner lease it to the potential developers?
It is a separate, separate ownership. On page 10, we list our recommendation based on those eight eligibility criteria. We do find that the proposed PUD can satisfy the criteria, and pending any additional information from the public at the public hearing tonight, we recommend that the planning commission recommend approval to the Board of Trustees for the PUD option for the Northville Downs of Plymouth PUD, provided that several outstanding items are submitted to the township for further review prior to any Board of Trustees consideration. Those include a traffic impact assessment, which the applicant has agreed to and is working on, a revised PUD eligibility plan, which is the concept plan that was shown tonight, so a revised plan which notes and details the following, that secondary access road be installed per the fire department's review, that the existing detention ponds be planted with a native seed mix to incorporate, or to improve the stormwater infiltration, aesthetics, and plant diversity of the site, that the rain garden be identified and installed with educational signage at a highly visible portion of, in the site, that some additional pedestrian pathways are provided to the main entrance of the facility and along Ridge Road, that the fully accessible pedestrian nature path, a minimum of eight feet in width, be installed through the publicly zoned lands, and that a spur to a scenic area of the Johnson Creek and community signage be provided, that all of the existing dirt areas of the site that will remain as unbuilt would be seeded and maintained as lawn areas, that additional landscaping is installed throughout the site beyond the minimum ordinance requirements to be developed, or to be finalized through the site plan development phase, and that a lighting and noise mitigation plan be provided and include restrictions such as primary lighting for the racetrack and parking lot will not be in operation when the track is not in use, controlled via a time system. We also recommend that if the PUD option is approved by the Board of Trustees at a future date, that a solid waste management plan for the disposal of animal waste, an emergency evacuation plan would be provided as part of the PUD contract. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have the report from the Township Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me alright? Engineering has reviewed the preliminary site plans for conformance with the township's engineering standards, and there's nothing from an engineering standpoint standing in the way of site plan approval. If all the conditions in our letter are addressed to the satisfaction of the planning commission, our recommendation for approval really means that we have no objection to the PUD option to move forward to the next step. And our recommendation is, it's conditional upon all, all the comments being, you know, being addressed to the satisfaction of the planning commission for moving forward and with, for eventual engineering, detailed engineering construction plan review and approval.
Thank you. And we have a report from the Township Fire Department where they list a number of concerns that they would have for the public safety should we move forward on this development from their perspective. And we have the Township Police Chief here who will give us a few words from his perspective.
Thank you, Chief Jim Nittel. As part of the process, I met with Chief Masiak from Northville City, as well as one of his captains, to discuss issues that they've had at the racetrack at its current location in Northville Township. Chief Masiak and Captain Hannah Wall report to me that they have, do not have any significant crime at the location right now. The amount of services that they provide, there's only one day during the year that they, that they have additional police officers assigned to the racetrack, and that is on Kentucky Derby Day, because they have an increase there. Generally, the clientele that go to the racetrack are seniors, senior citizens, that the amount of traffic is not consistent, that they have to conduct additional traffic enforcement in the area. A majority of the runs, dispatch runs for police are foot patrols, there are personal injuries, or the fire department would also be called, accidents in the parking lot, and also liquor checks for the license. The, the amount of police runs, average hours for a year are a little over 200 hours a year that they document. Each year, the Northville City Police Department reports to the state of Michigan. They make an annual report of units, local government, and they list the type of incidents that happen at the racetrack, the amount of hours that are used, the amount of resources that are used. That report goes back, and when the information is reported back for reimbursement for the services for police and fire, they are listed. Fire runs, going through the same process, I researched 10 years of data, there was an average of 1.1 fire runs to the racetrack in Northville per year, and then approximately 11 injuries reported, so one a month at the racetrack. I believe that's all the additional information I have. Police, approximately 100 dispatch runs to the racetrack in Northville City per year, so, which is not significant, but over the last 26 years, the captain has been with the police department, there have been no reported violent crimes at the racetrack in Northville City, or any crimes of concern that they brought to our attention. They're also, the police department also works, they're contacted by the racetrack and provide the information on, on those large money movements, so the police will do escorts for the money movements to make sure that the money safely moves from point A to point B. But along with those money movements, there's been no significant incident of theft or robbery involving those.
Any thought? I was gonna say, any questions? So you indicated that they average about 100 runs a year?
Correct.
Sounds high.
Total of 100 runs a year.
If you have a season that's, what is it, 25 weeks long or so?
Yeah.
30 weeks long?
Well, when I say 100, so, so the average hours are 212. So a run could be officers, so every time there's a race that's run at the course... So every time there's a race that's run at the course, they have an officer that walks and does a foot patrol through them. So that would be considered a dispatch run, even though it's self-initiated.
I see. Okay, that's not because somebody called and said, "I need the police."
No, anytime for Northville City, their policy's been when they have a race that's running there, that they do a foot patrol through. And they document every one of those foot patrols through their Clement system so that they can report that to the state, and then there's a reimbursement process.
They get compensated for that?
Correct, yes. So really, every minute that they're out there is documented on their daily logs. That information is compounded annually, and that information is then reported to the state of Michigan, and then they're reimbursed through the process.
How would that impact staffing? I mean, it's, you know, we would be compensated for it, which is great, but does that mean that we'd have to have additional staff? Or could those foot patrols be absorbed within the current staffing levels in the police department?
We certainly have to evaluate it, you know, but I believe, you know, right now with, you know, what's going on at current facility and what, you know, we could certainly absorb that. We would have on Derby Day, on Kentucky Derby, we would have additional officers out there, but we would anticipate, you know, being compensated for that. But yeah, we could absorb that, yes.
Would those...
Go ahead, Bob.
Okay. All right. Somebody else have questions?
Would those runs also include cash drops?
Yeah, so when there's money movements, the racetrack, in the current facility, the racetrack would contact the police department, advise them that they had money that was going to be moved. The officers would respond and escort the money from the building to the...
But would that be included in the roughly 100 runs per year?
Correct, yes.
And did they give you any indication of ridership per car?
I'm sorry?
Any indication of ridership per car?
Ridership per car, I guess I understand.
Meaning how many people average a car on their parking lot?
Oh, I did not have that information. They did not report any. I did ask the question as far as, it was difficult to determine accidents because of the streets and if they would be related to, but they do not supply any additional traffic enforcement or traffic direction for folks leaving or coming into the racetrack currently.
Anyone else with a question? All right, well, thank you, Chief, for coming in.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
All right. And next, we're going to hear from Supervisor Heisey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kurt Heisey, Plymouth Township Supervisor. First of all, I just want to say thank you all on the planning commission for your dedication. We don't say thank you enough to you, but as you know, under state law, the planning commission is an adjunct of the township board of trustees. I mean, you serve in our place to address these issues before they get to our level. So again, I want to thank you for your service. In my seven years as township supervisor, this is only the second time I have come before the planning commission on an active issue. And my reasons tonight are multi-leveled, really. First of all, obviously, this is a very unique project. This is the only racetrack left in the state of Michigan, and so it carries with it a great deal of extra effort that we all have to put into the analysis. Secondly, as you may know, under state law, the host community of a racetrack in Michigan is entitled to what's known as breakage fees, which is basically a form of revenue sharing. And so the township would have a fiduciary interest in this project, more so than what we would in any other type of project. Breakage fees, I'm sure they'll discuss more in detail in later, but for us right now, we've estimated those numbers to be anywhere from $250,000 to $300,000 a year that we could generate right now. That's assuming everything is stagnant at current Northville City levels. We would anticipate that with a new facility trying to be more of a community partner, that those revenues would increase over time. That's certainly their challenge, and their challenge would be our benefit. So I think as a board of trustees, we're very interested in this project because obviously we would be able to generate a fair amount of money, which would be very beneficial to us. My ask, my recommendation tonight is that you would agree with the findings of the planner and the engineer, and that you would approve the PUD and send it with an affirmative response to the board of trustees, so that we can then take that matter up. There's really going to be a kind of a two-phased approach to this project. And again, that's because of the uniqueness of this project. So what you have before you tonight is the PUD, the planned unit development. And Laura's done a great job of outlining all of the things that you should be looking for in that PUD, and I agree with that. My request is that you would stay within the four corners of the development site itself, okay? Because the things that Laura has outlined are generally unique to the site itself, the pathway, lighting, hours of operation, stormwater management, public amenities, energy conservation, geothermal, solar, some of the other things that they have brought to the table, really before we even asked for. So I would prefer that this board address those issues, and then send it off to the board of trustees, because the second phase of this is going to be a community benefit agreement. I don't think we have a community benefit agreement with any other business or development in the township. And a community benefit agreement would encompass what I would consider the policy issues and the financial issues that are inherent to this very unique project. We don't want to tip our hand yet fully as to what we're looking for as a board, or what I may be looking for, but we would certainly like to see more recreational enhancements, whether that is in the form of financial support or something in amenities such as soccer fields onsite, for example. We would like to, I would like to personally see the return of fireworks to Plymouth Township. This would be, I think, a perfect venue for that. This is also a great location for outdoor concerts, other types of venues. And we're not talking about, you know, Metallica or anything like that. I'm just thinking about like a community band, or Michigan Philharmonic, or somebody like that. Because I know in my conversations with the city, the city of Plymouth, they're turning away events every week, five K runs, concerts, other community benefit activities that they can no longer handle in the city, or they can handle at Kellogg Park because they're booked. And that's not unusual in this community, because we have a ton of arts, cultural, music, sports, and recreational opportunities. So I look at this site as part of the recreational amenities for both the township and the city, similar to USA Hockey Arena, similar to Hilltop Golf Course, or the Inn at St. John's. So these are all, these are these public, or quasi-public, or private amenities that exist in the township that do provide recreational opportunities for us. Those are the kinds of policy and detailed issues that I think the board would like to take up with them at the appropriate time. And again, that's a give and take. That's a negotiation process. We're not going to negotiate that tonight, but that is something that they know is coming down the road, assuming it gets out of this group first. So again, I would just ask that you focus on the sort of the real property issues that you can go with here tonight, and if you could link the money and the policy and some of the other recreational issues up to the board, so that we can negotiate with them and have some flexibility and some give and take on what that's going to look like. I just want to also mention one other thing, and that is, I know we've seen some media reports that we're asking $25 million from the state of Michigan for this project, and that is not the case at all. This is part of the MITC, or the Michigan International Technology Center Brownfield Redevelopment Zone, which encompasses all the old Dohoku prison properties on both Plymouth and Northville side of the Five Mile. And as a result, Five Mile Road is in terrible condition, and we all recognize that it has to be fixed. The road is the property and maintenance of Lane County, and so what we're trying to do is we've, Plymouth and Northville have been working now for at least five years to try to get funding from the state of Michigan, preferably, to rebuild Five Mile Road from Napier to back. I see our state senators here tonight, so I'm making that ask one more time, so I'm sure that the passes are still down. So what we're going to do is, that ask has been out there for years, and if this project were to go away, we would still be making that ask. So there's no linkage between state tax money, or local tax money for that matter, and the rehabilitation of Five Mile, or this particular project. I think that's all I have, board members. If you have, the chair, if you have questions for me?
Any questions for the supervisor?
It would be completely privately-held corporation, company venue?
This would be a privately-held corporation. The township would not be a partner in any way, other than under state law, we are allowed the so-called breakage fees.
Any other questions?
So the township wouldn't be responsible at all for anything at this site, anything that goes on? Is that correct?
That may be subject to negotiation, because I know that there's been some concern about the pathway. As Laura pointed out at the beginning, back in 2016, the township created a linear parkway on both sides of the Johnson Creek, and that was done for environmental preservation of the creek. So what we would like to see, again, what we have been asking for from the previous developer, was that pathway that would go up along the creek. Where that pathway crosses their property and goes into our zone is something that we would have to deal with them. I would prefer that if this were, if the path were a public amenity, that the township would be responsible for it, because I really don't want to be dealing with a third party on what was, what will basically be a recreation maintenance project. So I would prefer that that be part of the township's responsibility. But again, that's something we have to work out with them.
Okay. As far as being a fiduciary, though, there's no responsibility on the township for the actual use of the race horsing facility?
No, other than the fact that we are looking for community benefits from this site, and I listed a few, like concerts and fireworks and soccer, things like that, the fiduciary responsibility that I refer to is the fact that, under state law, we collect this revenue sharing. And so that's what makes this project very unique. And the property taxes as well, in this case, would currently go to the MITC Brownfield Authority. Now, if the state of Michigan were to come in and give us $25 million, then that equation changes radically, because then the MITC won't need that money for the road, and really we might be able to wind down the brownfield altogether, and then that tax revenue would go back to the townships directly.
Any other questions?
Is the site a Brownfield-designated site?
The entire MITC corridor is designated a Brownfield site, so that would be all of the former Detroit House of Corrections properties on the Plymouth Township side, all the way from Napier to where the Home Depot is right now. And on the Northville side, there's several parcels, again, from Napier all the way over to where the so-called Jean Dean Building, which is on the Northville side, that's a Chinese automotive company, they're on the Northville side right now, and that's pretty much the eastern boundary of the MITC for the Northville people.
And for the benefit of everyone in the room, could you explain what a Brownfield-designated site is?
Well, a Brownfield site is a site that requires environmental remediation. It's designated by the local governments, which we did back in 2017, that was then authorized by the state of Michigan. And so a Brownfield site is eligible for a tax abatement that can then be used by the developer to finance the environmental cleanups that are necessary at the site. And there's a variety of environmental issues in some of the parcels, but the beauty of the MITC authority is that we have been able to bundle all of these parcels together and designate them all as Brownfield. And so the primary reason for that is so that we could, if necessary, leverage the funding to rebuild Five Mile Road.
Anything else? All right? Well, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Okay. Now we hear from the applicant, so who wishes to get up and speak?
Good evening, and thank you for seeing us tonight. My name is Bill Hibbert. I'm the partner at Militello Property Group, and we were part of the original land search and site selection group. We're going to continue on as the owner's representative through the development and construction. With me is Becky Klein from PEA Group, a local civil engineering firm. They are responsible for all the 3D animation you're going to see tonight, the plans, the drawings, and even the plan representation, so they've done a super job for us. And the owners and operators of Northville Downs, John and Mike Carlo. Northville Downs and the Carlo family have been part of this business community for 75 years. The existing facility is old. It's antiquated, and the systems are beyond their useful life. A full investigation was done, and millions of dollars would have had to have been invested into that facility to continue operations at that location. The decision was made to sell that property and to look for a vacant space within close proximity to the original Northville Downs venue. The Five Mile and Ridge Road vacant property is ideal. The name of the development will be Northville Downs Racetrack at Plymouth. Do we have the 3D? Can we pull that up, so we can go through it overview?
It's on a flash drive, I think, Bob.
Yeah, I thought it was on a flash drive.
Bob, I think it's on the flash drive?
Yeah, yeah, she gave it to me. This one?
Yep. So there's the racetrack, and then adjacent to that will be the approximately 25,000-square-foot rainstand venue, including a sports bar and simulcast area. You can see to the left...
Sir, can you just move the mic in front of you over so we can pick up?
You can see to the left, the open bleacher area and the patio. It is worth noting that the racing season is 50 days long in the summer, and so the venue will be available for other community activity events on the property, important to note. The second structure on the property is the 40,000-square-foot barn and patio for the horses, riders, and trainers. Again, the horses, it's important to note, are not, stay overnight. They are brought onto the property in the morning by their caretakers. They run the race through the day, and then they're cooled down, and their caretakers take them away for the day. The design that we've considered is for full green space utilization, and you can see as we've talked about, there is ample space, and we've kept the two ponds on either end. The perimeter, the empty walkway throughout will be a benefit to the community. We are also incorporating redesign for energy efficiency, a solar farm or a rain panel that we've talked about, geothermal heating and cooling systems, using rain collection water for irrigation, and LED interior and exterior lighting systems. The project is a multimillion-dollar endeavor. We are planning on using all local contractors, local suppliers, local vendors for job creation during construction. And then at the end, the Northville Downs is an operating facility which will employ full-time staff on the property. Other questions? John, would you like to add anything?
My name is John Carlo, and thank you very much. Paul laid it out pretty good for us. I mean, we're not a secret. What we do is what we do. We're trying to take our existing property and reconform it to the site that was somewhat already developed. We found the best way for it to flow is the way we have it laid out. It gives the best viewing for the patrons, and the easiest accessibility for the horses to get to the racetrack. There's not a lot of complexity to our project from a logistics on the site itself, but I think once we touch on what Becky's going to do with the civil, the parking lots and things, I'm here to answer any questions you might have about how the racetrack actually functions. functions on a regular basis, on a daily basis, during the live season, during the simulcast season, things like that, so.
What do you say to the, and I don't know anything about horse racing, but what do you say to the, the criticism or the comments that this is a sport that is, that is sunsetting all over the country?
Well, I think if you were to take that, it's not going away. It's going away where they want it to go away, where people aren't committed to the sport from a state level and from a, from a community level. We've seen the rebirth of racing in Ohio. We were, we also operate a racetrack in Ohio, where we were racing in the 40 to 50 day a year seasons, just like we do now currently. Things changed in Ohio, where now that has dramatically increased to be almost 80 days a year. There is only a few opportunities for these individuals, individuals who race horses to find these locations to do it. And we don't feel like it's a dying sport. Anybody who gives that impression doesn't know the intricacies of the sport itself, in our opinion.
What is the 50-day season, roughly?
Currently, next year, we applied, excuse me, for this calendar year, we're going to start April 7th, go every Friday and Saturday through September 30th.
Do you foresee this facility going to 80 days, like your Toledo facility?
Our, our facility in Ohio was down near Cincinnati, in a town called Lebanon. It really depends on how, racing is a function of the business itself. So the more successful we are at our location, the more opportunities we have to provide for more racing at the facility. So yes, the goal would be to make business better than it is currently, and to race. Now, when we say race additional days, there's a lot to an individual race day. If we were to do better, we were looking, we go by the week, not by the month, not by the year. So when we add days, we add two days, we add a month, eight days, and we find that. We're really working on a 50-day schedule. That's what we've applied for. That is what we foresee until we can move that forward. But that just extends the season, not the days of the week, for example.
With coordinating the two projects, the Northville one in Plymouth, this were to move forward, would you miss any seasons?
No, we currently, the way we've got it planned out, is we are going to transition straight from one to the other. We'll have this facility fully operational before we would vacate at Northville Downs. So that would be, close on Saturday, open on Sunday, kind of a feel. And I think that's what would be required by racing gaming control. Again, they're another layer of what we do for our approvals. So we would have to coordinate all those things through gaming control.
Okay.
That's what we would like to see happen.
Thank you.
Can you kind of describe what common demographics of your guests look like? Not what they look like, but...
Sure, there's a, there's a wide range. We have everything, you know, the live racing component, when we do the live racing at the track. We have everything from the senior citizens that were mentioned earlier, to families with kids standing there. We do, you know, we do dollar popcorn and dollar hot dogs on the weekends. So, you know, people come out at 7 o'clock, we're racing at nighttime. And they do bring kids, they bring, there's, there's college students that are coming now. There's a lot of things that have changed with the, with the online presence that's happened in the last two years, not necessarily with horse racing, but with the other opportunities that people have. So we've seen an exposure to a younger demographic, maybe by default, because there wasn't a baseball game to bet, and they found the horse racing section there, where we're drawing some of those customers back to the business.
Outside of racing, can you talk a bit about what other sorts of programming you've presented there?
Excuse me, yeah, we're a third generation operator at this current facility. So the way we've always been, the way we've always handled ourselves is if our facility fits a need that the community is looking to host, and all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, we make this facility available to them. There's never been, I've been here 30 years, a little over 30 years now, I can't think of one event that was promoted, or excuse me, that was brought to us that we rejected. It may have been rejected at a different level for a different reason, but if our facility is, is there, and the township is okay with the activity that's been requested, that's pretty much how we handle, how we've handled our business for the last 30 years since I've been around. We've hosted soccer, soccer practices at Northville. There's still a sign there that probably hasn't been used since 1998. But there used to be soccer fields on the infield at Northville for quite some time. I don't know where they relocated them to, but we did make that available to the community in Northville for soccer practices. We do have some time restraints on what we do. That area that they practice on is a restricted area during the racing season, the racing days. So we have to limit the access on those particular days. But other than that, this, this, this could work out very well for those, for those community-based sporting events and practice facilities.
Do you have any other events in your Cincinnati, your Ohio facility?
Okay, so we do not currently own that anymore. We sold that about four years ago, but we, we did. We hosted, down there, it was called Apple Fest. I don't know what the popular fruit festival would be here, but we had Apple Fest. Just a tremendous location, community, vendors, things like that. We've done county fair, kind of rides and activities, but they've all been brought to us, okay? Just so you know, we're not really the instigator of this, we're more the host of it. So anybody in the community that has a good idea, and you guys enjoy, are okay with that idea, and we can accommodate it where it's not disruptive of the business that we do on a regular basis, we're committed to all those projects.
Thank you.
So if everything went according to plan, when would you plan to open?
We've got our schedule set, and Becky and Bill can touch a little bit more on that. But we would like to be in operation for the Kentucky Derby next year, the first week of May. That would be our target. That would be our target, to be ready and open for the Derby in '24.
It's aggressive.
That's ambitious.
Working with our local contractors to...
Yep.
What are the, are there any gaming activities at the new facility that would be different or incremental to the activities that you presently are doing in Northville?
Thank you for your question. No, there will absolutely be nothing different than the course of business than what we currently do at Northville.
Thank you. And your hours of operation, I was a little surprised that it's 11 to 11, seven days a week. Is that comparable to what you do in Northville?
Yes, we do. We say 11 to 11. The first race normally, from our simulcast standpoint, starts in that 12 to 12:30 window. So we open our facility up about an hour before that for the customers to come settle in, start doing their work, get ready for the activities. Last race of the day, you know, the tracks, they, they start on the East Coast, obviously work all the way out to California. So there are some California tracks that start at 8 or 9 o'clock, but we dial that back based on our own business, where we're normally closed by 11. There's racing that goes 24/7 with the internet now and the simulcasting, excuse me, the satellites. But we, we keep it in that 11 to 11 window, do the best of our abilities.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this point? Okay. Well, with that, we will get ready to open the public hearing. As we open the public hearing, you'll be allotted three minutes of time to, you know, give us your statement. Once everyone has had an opportunity to speak, and if you already spoken and you thought of something that you didn't make in your first comments, you are allowed to come back for a second, three-minute segment of comments. We ask you to be clear, concise, and cogent. Try to use your imagination if necessary, not to keep repeating the same issues that you have. We ask that you, that you respect the applicant and us here, so we don't permit any cheering or booing or any of that. We want to make everyone feel that they're welcome, and each opinion is important to us. So with that, you will open the public hearing at 8:19, and I'll ask the secretary to read a summary of the comments that have been sent to us.
So, dear planning commissioners, since January 23rd, 2022, the planning department received a total of 556 email comments regarding PC number 2464, the Northville Downs of Plymouth PUD. Forty-one of these were unique comments, while 515 comments sent using People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals, or PETA, sub-generated form, excuse me, auto-generated form, letter. The following list summarizes the topics of the 41 comments that were directly received in the planning department. Comments sent directly to the supervisor's office were only included if forwarded on to the planning department. Comments received after 12:00 PM on 2/15/23 were not included in this summary. So comments that were opposed. Comments about noise, traffic, and lighting, one. Comments about ethics and animal treatment, 27. Comments about project financing, six. And comments in opposition without a topic, one. And please note that several comments in opposition of the project addressed more than one of these items. Comments were categorized based on their primary topic. So comments in favor. Comments about recreation options, two. And comments about local revenue and project financing, one. Neutral mixed comments. Comments about environmental impacts on the site, there were two. And comment that had a subject line related to horse racing, but the email was blank, there was one. The PETA form comments read as follows. A message to the planning commission. As a Michigander, I'm writing to request that you deny the proposal for a new horse racing facility in Plymouth Township. Horses used for harness racing are whipped and administered an array of painkillers, anti-inflammatory drugs, and performance-enhancing hormones to keep them racing when they're injured. Illegal drugging, such as milkshaking with sodium bicarbonate, is common. All of this leads to catastrophic injuries and death. In 2020, 31 trainers and veterinarians, many involved in harness racing, were indicted for taking part in an illicit doping scheme uncovered by the FBI. The cases are being adjudicated now, and several people are already serving prison sentences. We should not allow an industry synonymous with illegal doping, horse deaths, and slaughter to operate in our state. Please vote no on the recent proposal of a new horse racing facility. That's the end of the comments.
Okay, thank you. So we ask you to step up, you can have two or three at a time, or whatever, to the podium. Give us your name and address if you so wish. So with that, we'll open the comments.
Good evening. I'm going to be on top. I'm getting old and I'll see now, so I have to read my notes, sorry. I'm concerned that we have a white elephant on our hands. That's why I'm concerned, the prospects of a horse racing track in Plymouth Township. Horse racing seems to be a dying business. I had cousins that were in the harness racing business most of their lives, and had to give it up because they could not make a living. I ended up hiring at my company. The failed pinnacle track in here in Township cost Wayne County in excess of $36 million. Hazel Park Raceway closed. Windsor Raceway closed. Jackson Raceway closed. The DRC was adversely affected when Windsor Raceway, when Windsor Casino opened and eventually closed. Supervisor Heisi confirmed that this is the only track that will be open in the state of Michigan, so I really believe that harness racing is dying in our state. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next person?
Good evening. Mary Ann McLaren, resident of Plymouth Township, and also I am Chair of the Township Environmental Leadership Commission. I did email some comments from the commission, from the Environmental Leadership Commission to the planning commission. Am I to understand that we're only going to be discussing tonight whether the property should be ZONE PUD, and not any of the other issues that would come? So I have to recommend, everything that we have discussed in our commission seems to have been covered. Recommendations have been made by planning commission, by Laura McKenna, to make the issues. It seems like this is a good thing to do with that piece of property. It doesn't seem like it's conducive to any other type of development. And it's preserving all the natural habitats that are there. And hopefully, you know, that's what, so that's the stance of the Environmental Leadership Commission from the township, is that I think you should go forward with granting the PUD.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Howard Hemrich, resident since '72, a Plymouth Township and business owner in the city of Plymouth. I have a major concern, we talk about planning. And in 2016, as I understand it, this property was approved for the current use that was approved at that time, excuse me, I'm being redundant. I'm assuming that one looked at the access and address to this location. You have two-lane Ridge Road, you have two-lane Beck Road to the freeway, then four-lane to Six Mile Road. Where are all these vehicles going to come from? For the racetrack, this is a real nice location. I've been out here for a long time. I've been by Northville Downs, you're landlocked, you have no access to freeways. You're going to come off of what interchange to come to this racetrack? With the garbage trucks from Salem dump, the schools, all industrial traffic. Anyone who's lived out here, and I live in Ridgewood Hills, right nearby, it's gridlocked. It's gridlocked in the morning, it's gridlocked at lunchtime, it's gridlocked in the evening. So I agree with the supervisor. Maybe we need to get some money to fix Five Mile Road. Maybe we need to get some money to fix Ridge Road and Beck Road. Beck Road has North Ridge Church, which operates during some of the weekend hours. It has Good Council Church, it has a lot of traffic. So this is not in any way impugning the request. It's saying you don't have an infrastructure at this location that's going to allow for the residents who live here, who work here, to go from their private residences to their office spaces with any reasonable expectation of timing. So that's my comment on this particular planning. I'm assuming the 2016 plan for the condominium development was based on the fact that roads were adequate for that type of use. I don't know that it is adequate for your type of use at this point in time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Here is my...
My name is Joyce Janeky. I am from St. Cross Shores. However, I feel that anytime there is a potential for cruelty, I feel anyone has the right to speak up and be heard. Harness racing involves cruelty to horses. Standard breeds may not die often, nor have to be euthanized on the tracks. However, their lives are cruel in other ways. Their racing careers have lasted longer than 10 years, and their lives are often isolated, confined, and controlled. Someone quite sagely once said, "Racing horses are good to die." Dying on the track, during practice, after illness or injury, in the hands of those acquiring them after their track lives are up, and upon the floors of Mexican and Canadian slaughterhouses. It takes a lot of horses to produce those considered good enough for racing. So the cruises I speak of cover an enormous number of horses. And the winners virtually end up feeling as bad as the losers. After they make money for you, will the township have a rescue monetary plan for the horses? You certainly don't believe they will live out their 30 to 35 years in loving homes without your assistance? You see, all these things must be thought out, even though horse racing has become a huge money loser and must be heavily subsidized. Then there's the cruel human side. Over 4,400 calls were made to the Michigan Problem Gambling Hotline in 2021. The year online gambling was approved in our state, nearly tripling, tripling the number of calls from 2020. Also, referrals to receive gambling treatment spiked by 42%. It's estimated that possibly 75,000 individuals, or 1% of Michigan's population, experience real gambling issues and face higher rates of depression, bankruptcy, divorce, and suicide. Gambling addiction is so powerful because it affects the brain, like drugs or alcohol. Gambling addiction is so powerful because it affects the brain, like drugs or alcohol. And findings indicate that the closer one is to a gambling site, the greater the risk. Now, with online gambling using cell phones, temptation is only inches away. So, with all due respect, Plymouth Township, you must decide as to what your legacy is going to be regarding this venture. Will you view the money made in a possible community events venue with real pride? Or will the money in the venue always remind you that they came at the high expense of many mistreated horses and broken human lives? Thank you.
Hello, my name is April Lawson, and I'm here to oppose the new horse racetrack. This is an outdated sport. It is a human and animal cruelty. Horse racing is nothing but gambling facility on the backs of these horses. Even if there's not a casino building based on the grounds, people still gamble on these horses. Gambling has been linked to the same kind of addictions, such as substance abuse, as drugs and alcohol. It also causes family issues, and self-esteem, and anxiety. Families could face financial issues. As a mother, I would like to refuse a gambling facility in the city of Plymouth. I hope my child or other children around such an outdated sport, a sport that's based on gambling cruelty towards animals. The new facility could ruin families' lives that live in the area. It ruins the lives of these horses more. Horses should not be used for entertainment, disregarded when no longer useful. Often, the ones that were considered the loser horses can get sent to slaughter, just because they're injured. The way these horses are trained, being whipped with their tongues tied, is horrific. This is very painful, causes distress and anxiety, lacerations to the tongue, which leads to swelling and difficult swallowing for these horses. These are often are forced, I'm sorry, they're often forced into training before their bones have even fully matured, as young as nine months to two years of age. This is 100% unethical and shouldn't go on anymore. Humans should not be allowed to gamble upon the sake of animals. Please reconsider your vote and vote no for these animals' sakes. Thank you.
You know, I asked that there be no applause and, you know, no booing or any of that because we want everyone to feel welcome to come. And when those kinds of actions happen, you may dissuade someone else from speaking, and we want to hear from everyone, pro or con, on the issues that are before us. So, I appreciate your respect to the other people that might be here that have an opposing view to your own. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Migliotti. Excuse me, if you have a little more conversation, we're trying to listen up here. Please hand fire. Thank you. My name's Kathleen Migliotti. I'm a resident of Plymouth Township. Am I allowed to ask questions, a couple of questions before I?
What, the way we do it is, for example, we already had one on the traffic, so I'm taking notes, the applicant should be taking notes as well. So, when all the comments are done, we'll come back and we will ask those questions again.
Okay. I wanted to speak in opposition to the proposed horse racing track because I don't believe it's consistent with the 2025 master plan for land use you can find on the Plymouth Township website, and it's described as a reflection of the long-term vision and guide to the physical development of the community. Jumping right into the master plan, on page 13, the township discusses the need to attract family-forming and young professional households moving forward. Horse racing, the average fan is 51-year-old male. It's not attractive to younger generations, it doesn't serve the master plan in that way, it's not going to draw younger families into the area. Northville Downs could counter and say that in future phases of plan, they plan to build a gambling facility too, the gaming facility. That's, I believe, in like phase two of their plan. The problem is, and they'll admit that it's contingent upon Michigan Legislature passing that legislation to allow them to do that, and that's failed in the Michigan Legislature for decades now. Also, the master plan discusses environmental issues, and I quote, "Environmental protection efforts must be at the forefront of township efforts." Northville Downs mentions some environmental issues in there, they actually have a nice description of the green building measures, the geothermal, the solar panels that they discussed. Unfortunately, this is where my question comes in. The phrasing says the project will investigate the use of those things and that green design initiatives will be studied, but there's no actual commitment to, at least in their narrative, there's no actual commitment to implement those. So, I'd like to know if that's something that is set in stone they're going to do, or if it's just something, it's just words on paper. Also, in our master plan, we discuss the problem with additional paved surfaces and water, surface water contamination. The Northville Downs will see about a 5,000-square-foot grandstand, 62,000 square foot of buildings, and that's before the potential for the gaming facility, another 50,000 square foot. In addition to asphalt pavement parking areas for guests, and if the gaming facility is added later on, there will be additional paved asphalt parking and construction and access roads, so there's more paved areas there. They do suggest, or the renderings have a 25-foot buffer from the gravel lot to the wetlands. I didn't see any study information to suggest that why the 25 feet was determined to be sufficient, so I'd like to know more about that. And then, another recommendation in the master plan was to research and adopt a dark-sky ordinance. The Northville Downs narrative says they will have lighting needed for nighttime security. Future development phases may add additional lighting for nighttime operation. And I believe one of them mentioned there's a potential for 50-foot lighting structures, so that's another thing I think we need to keep in mind with this project. So, I don't feel that it fits with the goals and objectives laid out in the Plymouth 2025 Master Plan for Land Use, and it doesn't reflect our long-term vision for the community of Plymouth Township. And unfortunately, I feel it will be another story of a failed southeast Michigan race track. Thank you.
What was your name again?
Kathleen Migliotti.
All right, next person?
Good evening. My name is Anthony Costa. I live in the Oregon Shepherd neighborhood with my family. I'm here in opposition to this proposal. A lot of people have already touched on the cruel aspects of horse racing, and so I'm going to touch on a lot of things they already have, but I have a list of the 552 confirmed deaths of horses in US racetracks in 2021. I didn't mention that if you can do it, let's look at that. That's there. I want to ask, as a state, we've outlawed dog racing because of the cruelty and the perception of that sport. So, I ask you, how is this any different in that regard? Also, Mr. Heisey pointed out, or he painted a beautiful picture of a community center where everybody's on a climbing pace, talking about this horse track. Again, this is a private entity, so everything is going to be under their purview. But they might say they're going to play, well, who knows? You know, this is all up to them. The last horse track was made in the state was 2008, pinnacle racetrack by Bunch Airport, great location for a horse track, by all intents and purposes, right by the airport. It was open for two years and then closed, it was a huge failure. And then they leveled it, and I believe it's an Amazon fulfillment center now. So, is this the legacy that we want in our area? And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Lutera. My address is Northville, but I actually just live two miles west of the proposed development. My husband and I race harness horses, have all our lives, and I serve on the Board of the United States Trotting Association, which is the 17,000-member organization for anyone who's involved in the standard-bred industry. I'm also Vice Chair of the American Horse Council, and the AHC is representing interests of all equine breeds and disciplines across the country. And I think it's safe to say that anyone who races horses in Michigan, and probably most horse owners, are supportive of this proposal to keep our last racetrack open and keep racing alive in Michigan. More importantly to you as a planning commission, it's an exciting new development for Plymouth Township. I live on Five, well, as I said, I live on Five Mile Road, just two miles west of the proposed development. We've lived there, my husband and I have lived there for like 35 years, and since we've been there, that particular parcel and all the surrounding parcels have been empty, you know, nothing, no revenue generation. I mean, I'm sure there's minimal tax payments, but the land is less desirable, less than desirable for a lot of development because of the proximity to the landfill. But it would be perfect for a racetrack. It's a great location, good freeway access for patrons and for horsemen shipping horses in. A new racetrack in Plymouth Township, it's a win for the Michigan agricultural industry, Michigan horsemen with a nice new facility to race at, and a win for Plymouth Township with the tax revenue and economic benefits it will provide, utilizing vacant land and a venue for a variety of activities such as concerts, community events, and other equestrian activities. Also, I want to respond to some of the people that have been critical of how our horses are treated. Standard-bred horses are bred to race, that's what they like to do, that's what they enjoy doing. We don't force them to race, that's what they're bred to do. Most racehorses are very well-cared-for. They're our livelihood, so of course we take very good care of them. And a lot of the negative input that you're getting stating that horse racing is cruel is coming from people who are parroting animal rights group. And a good example was the 500 or some letters, they were a template letter, talking about cruelty to animals. So, members of the planning commission, I urge you to vote to support the proposed Northville Downs and to pass the proposal to the townspeople for their decision. Thanks.
Okay, thanks for coming up.
My name is Tom Barrett. I'm a lifelong Millvine Northville resident. I'm here in support of the new proposed racetrack. I am president of Michigan Harness Horsemen Association, a group of several hundred horsemen who breed, race, train, and race harness horses in the state. I also, with my son Ryan, I have a business in Plymouth at Curtis North Territorial Equine Training Center that's been there for many, many decades. We continue to be an adjunct for the, just the racetrack, and will be for the new one. The economic activity and the benefits to the area multiplied with facilities like the one that I have. Marilyn clearly pointed out the benefits of a facility of this nature. I invite any of the attendees to stop by and see how the horses are treated. Many of the people before and after will cite breakdowns and other statistics. Those are primarily for thoroughbred tracks and thoroughbred horses, completely different breed. The incidence of catastrophic breakdowns or death on the racetrack is minimal. We see one every couple of years, and it generally involves a heart attack that's unrelated to racing. But obviously, any sport that has competitive nature, who has the benefit, has the possibility of abuse. Game control tests the participants equine and human on a night basis to ensure that the racing rules are being followed, and the proposed, you know, drugs are not in the system of any racehorse. The incidence of positive tests in Northville is virtually nonexistent, so labs that test all across the country. In summary, this is a great project. Northville has a 75-year history at the current location. We're moving down the road, improving the facility, and I would urge your support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kylie Cruz. I am a lifelong Plymouth Township resident. I'm here for two years, I'm on 35. I am a little bit worried about the changes that I've seen happening, especially in regards to the developments. But the proposed Northville Downs at Plymouth Township is one of the more concerning of those proposed developments for myriad reasons that cannot be adequately addressed in three minutes. Though I worry that these issues will be disregarded if not addressed now, as further meetings imply approval for this development. This land has been sitting unused for years, and it meets with the ongoing bulldozing of trees and fields within this space and in the immediate surrounding area. The remaining woodland areas have become one of the few remaining safe spaces for wildlife that continue to be driven from their homes. It is disheartening that so many can look at natural spaces and only see dollar signs. But in Plymouth Township, we better serve with what is solely park space, allowing wildlife to remain in their woodland habitat while also providing opportunities for folks to enjoy nature. Many are pointing to the green aspects of this proposed facility, ignoring that they do not mitigate the environmental impact of such a development. Not only are we proposing to further decimate another natural area and encroaching even more on wildlife habitat, but we do so to build a facility that will see the exploitation and abuse of another species of animals, horses. In the past eight years, at least three horses have died at Northville Downs and race related names recently, like Franch and Cardiitis Laps. These deaths are just a few home hundreds nationwide. Horse recent deaths have only seen a decline in Michigan because of closing racetracks across the state over the past two decades. There's also worth noting that facilities like this are often great host sites for disease outbreaks such as the EpiCupus virus outbreak at Northville Downs in 2005. Horses can play host to at least 56 different zoonotic diseases, which are diseases that can be passed from non-human animals to human. Even with the kind of strong biosecurity measures that clearly weren't in place at Northville Downs in 2005, there's no guarantee that an outbreak of any other kind of zoonotic disease is impossible, putting the community at risk. We must also consider the fact that easier access to bedding and the potential for casino on-site would increase opportunities for those grappling with dealing with addictions to suffer. Michigan has seen a dramatic rise in people struggling with dealing with addictions, and a facility like this would certainly exhaust the issue. Despite now being the last racetrack in Michigan, Northville Downs has seen a steady decrease in attendance, a decrease that has only become more pronounced in the past four years. What this is to me is that this isn't the kind of facility that people want in their communities. So, why spend millions of dollars to build a new racetrack that is likely to follow its predecessor's footsteps? Wouldn't it have studied investment, really rewilding a community space that honors nature and still provides a draw for people interested in getting out and spending time with friends and family? Despite being dressed up with plans for natural spaces and potential recreation, it's clear that most of the arguments in favor of Northville Downs and Plymouth Township development are focused on money. Whether it be the revenues coming into the township through increased traffic to local businesses, which is not a guarantee, or the breakage fees, which do not offset the larger and often non-monetary costs of such a development. But we let our decisions be guided by profit motive rather than logic, which favors of local residents and who are truly serving. Mr. Heisey obviously has had his mind made up, but I'm hopeful that money won't color the final decision on whether or not to move forward with what would actually be a step backward for Plymouth Township.
Yes? People at home say they can't hear. My recommendation is to shut your mics off because it's reverberating between this one...
Okay. Yeah, I just got a text on that myself.
Can you hear me?
Wait, just, yes, I can hear you. And if people want to have side conversations, you can just step out and do that and come back in, because, you know, other people are trying to listen, so appreciate that. And you're ready to go.
So, good evening, Council Commission. Thank you so much for allowing us to have a few minutes to express our concerns. My name is Sally Petrella, and I'm here on behalf of Friends of the Rouge. Our offices are located in the city of Plymouth, over there with the facility that Gail helps to run over there at Park.
Good evening, township board. I'm Melissa Ward. I'm Susan Thompson, and also a Friends of the Rouge board director and a longtime volunteer, and also a resident of the city of Plymouth. So, the Friends of the Rouge are extremely concerned about this project, and personally, I've been with Friends of the Rouge for 23 years, and spend my time monitoring the Johnson Creek, sampling it for fish, for benthic macroinvertebrates. It's just this geo, this asset for the Rouge River. It is the healthiest, cleanest, most beautiful part of the river, and we have really serious concerns about the decline of this resource that you have at Plymouth Township. So, I am going to read this letter that the board put together. I'll try not to read all of it. We're trying to share our three minutes here. So, this proposed development would run directly along Johnson Creek, and I'm just not hearing much, and... So, just a little bit about Friends of the Rouge. If you're not familiar with us, we're a 501(c)(3) organization founded in 1986 to raise awareness about the need to clean up the Rouge River. So, we've been in existence for 34 years. We operate under the mission to restore, protect, and enhance the Rouge River watershed through stewardship, education, and collaboration. We envision a future where a clean and vibrant Rouge River is the center of our community. Individual and community actions protect and improve the health of the Rouge River, assuring that its natural, economic, and recreational value enhances the quality of life in the Rouge River ecosystem. So, it is with our mission in mind that we address you in this letter to express our concern regarding potential development along the Johnson Creek tributary of the Middle Rouge River. The concerns Friends of the Rouge has regarding the development are as follows. Number one, development of this parcel will result in vegetation removal and creation of more impervious surfaces, paved surfaces, which increases stormwater runoff that can lead to increased water temperatures, sedimentation, and habitat loss in the Johnson Creek. This parcel is directly adjacent to Johnson Creek, the only cold water tributary, and Blue Ribbon Trout Stream that's home to the endangered redside dace. It's a small fish, and cold water fish such as mottled sculpins and johnny dirters that are very sensitive you don't see in many other areas. I'm hoping Sue and I are sharing our time here. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. So, Friends of the Rouge has monitored the river for Johnson Creek for benthic macroinvertebrates and fish for decades. Johnson Creek is a tributary that has a rich diversity of aquatic macroinvertebrates, including sensitive stoneflies that we're already seeing somewhat decline because of increased water temperatures due to all the impervious surfaces, caddis flies, mayflies. There's data that demonstrates that increased impervious surfaces in the watershed decreases diversity in aquatic maiota. There's a concern about the pollutant load that the racetrack track operations, housekeeping could have on Johnson Creek. Runoff of pollutants such as nutrients from horse manure, horse washing, gravel fines from the track surface would be a detriment to Johnson Creek. And then, yes, Plymouth Township does not have dedicated green space referenced in its master plan. Green space is necessary for the well-being of township residents as well as to provide climate violence to offset climate change. So, Friends of the Rouge asks that the Plymouth Township leadership acts cautiously when beginning this new era of development. Please consider the consequences of removal of vegetation within the floodplain and replacing it with more impervious surfaces. Due to Johnson Creek's unique importance as an ecological resource, Friends of the Rouge recommends that the developer employ stormwater strategy that is greater than the minimum requirements of the local county and state's standards. And additionally, it's important to note that Friends of the Rouge's position follows the recommendations found in the state of Michigan's Healthy Climate Plan to protect Michigan's land and water by restoring existing wetlands and waterways. We have some additional concerns that Susan Thompson was meant to express to you.
Thank you. Just, just to reiterate what Sally just brought up is, is we only have one Johnson Creek, so we don't have a chance for renewal. We want to take due caution and due care in what we're doing, especially in line with this corridor, which is undeveloped, as the previous speaker brought up, how important that green space is and undeveloped space is to the master plan of the township and even in the surrounding areas. As a city of Plymouth resident, as being with the joint recreation lab, I would certainly love to see that consideration for green space without having to have a horse track development which just seems to be so, so out of context with, with the neighborhoods and the development that we would like to see and the activities we would like to see here in Western Wayne County and Plymouth, that we would like, we can do better as Plymouth and Plymouth Township and as, as, as people in developing your watershed. So, we want to protect Johnson Creek and the other developments that have happened in the Johnson Creek watershed in Northville, particularly at Kegger Ridge. Also, extra engineering controls will be required there if that development, when that development did go forward, so please consider that. Thank you.
My name is Bill Pine. I've lived in Terrellwood since 1978. We've raised five kids here. It has been a great place to raise children. I want to support making that be the case in the future. The Paolo guys did a good job of talking about business. They talked about the different costs. They know what's going on right now, and they're doing a good job of this. I don't think the township's done that yet. Maybe they have, but it's not apparent. I'm not going to give you guys an opinion. I'm going to ask you a question. To do that, I'm going to frame it, be telling your shorts to you first, make some observations that mirror what a number of other folks here have said, and I promise I'll ask my question. When I was a kid, I worked with a guy named Rico. And Rico had a dad named Rico. The elder Rico had a small truck fleet, I think it was in southeast Detroit, nine trucks, and his nickname was Nine Truck Rico. The son went to department route, business school, management degree. When he finished home and said, hey dad, I got two great ideas for your business. He said, one, standardize your trucks. His dad said, oh, great idea. He said, two, you can get three or four more times the business that you have right now because people love you, so get some more trucks. And his dad smiled. He said, son, I know I can get three or four times in the business, but if it takes me five or six times more work, then I'd end up no better off than I am right now and probably less better off. So, he stayed Nine Truck Rico. Now, the observations, and I haven't heard a whole lot of this, I realize it's probably the subject of the next meeting, but anytime you see something like this, you guys did a good job, you know, is to talk about benefits and costs. And that's financial and non-financial. From a financial standpoint, benefits clearly are this shared sources thing. There may be some ancillary business always, just people that have been in Northville. Maybe some stuff we haven't thought about, I don't know. Non-financial stuff, I don't know, stick up about horse racing. I have to talk to some of my friends about horses as to what they have. There are probably some non-financial benefits too. And the clerk talked about non-financial benefits of having a venue for places. I mean, the clerk's been talking about that stuff for five to two years. From a cost standpoint, public safety, just to have people around is going to be an issue. Fire, infrastructure, solid waste disposal, the other utilities, probably primarily water. From a non-financial standpoint, it's going to be things like public safety, hopefully there won't be an increase in crime, but certainly public safety, congestion, quality of your life, some other stuff as well, probably. With apologies to them then from Canton, if they're here, I don't like going to Canton because it's too congested. Plymouth has some real things going for it, it's not being congested. In terms of infrastructure, the second speaker talked about being worried about roads. Now, you guys may have something else figured out, but if you look at a ridge in Five Mile, there's a surface railroad that goes across both of those. And I don't know if you folks remember what happened when we did the Shelton Road, M14 Railroad underpass or overpass to keep the thing? Our water went, yeah, because of what happened here. So, that's something, it's an unknown, but we ought to do it almost. The question we have is, if you guys were a summer, can you prompt somebody to do a nine-truck Rico analysis to make sure we don't go through a whole lot of generations, only to end up no better off anymore and perhaps worse off? So, challenge is to you.
Well, my name is Jeff Kudier. I live in Plymouth Township. Thanks for everyone for all your comments, especially the last gentleman who, after he was almost done, I thought I might as well just go sit down. You know, the $250,000 to $300,000 that supervisor Hazy mentioned was a lot of creepy stuff to each review and certainly to me, but for the township, it's a round here in the budget pretty much. And supervisor, I'm sorry, police chief, I tell, talked about the, I think he said, if I understood him right, a hundred trips on average to the racetrack a year. Well, three tracks open 25 weekends, 25, 26 weekends, two days a week, so that's two trips each night. It seems like an awful lot of police activity, and I'm concerned about that sort of thing, what it's bringing to our, to our township. That's how I moved to the township a little over 10 years ago. I kind of looked at us, as I mentioned, you know, we don't have a lot of congestion here. I moved from Canton to township. I'm glad I did. I don't like the decision in Canton. The ends, we're just, just don't justify the means here. There's a lot of cost, a lot of risk for the benefit.
Hi. I'm Gary Hyden. I'm focused on money. I lay that out right now. I'm the Economic Development Coordinator for Plymouth Township. My goal is to fill every single open spot there is in this township with a business that brings taxes to the township. Okay? I'm laying that out. This field has been empty for six years. I've had at least 50, at least 50 businesses that were going to move in. I've gotten no support from Wayne County, no support from the state of Michigan, monetary support. MITC came along, we've got actually got support, we got some, some ideas of infrastructure and how to fix it. So, I think we're good. I brought Wabasto in, I brought Waverly in, I brought Amazon in. I know, everybody hates them all. Guess what? We've got the lowest taxes in Wayne County, right here at Plymouth Township. Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. But just remember, yeah, I know, you want to get up and talk, come on and talk. But, yeah, leave it alone. So, that's a key piece. I back up to Ridge Road, right down the street from this facility. I've known these gentlemen for a long time. They're not bullshitting when they're talking about the kinds of stuff that they want to do for this township. This is not just, they're not in it for themselves, they're in it for us. And for me, I raised my whole family right down the street from this facility. I'm very much into, to this because I've seen, guess what? I can put something worse in there and I'll make every one of you cry with some of the buildings and stuff I can put in to go in this spot. Thank you.
Hi there. Bob McCurdy, Plymouth Township President, 1275 Haybury, Haybury Hill Drive. I'm also vice president of the Plymouth Rain Soccer Club, and I represent over 350 children who play in our community and bring benefit to our community. I was actually, at first, after we went out about this, when we learned about the community use agreement and the potential for that, I wanted to. It's my understanding that your guys' job tonight is only to sign us to the treasures for consideration based on the example statutes being breached, in our opinion. I would encourage you guys to do that and let those, let, let go to the township, to the state's work, to be dispensed, to make the agreement be reached. I want to hear the powers and imperations of the council, which would be incredibly beneficial for our 375 children who could use those fields Monday through Thursdays and Sundays. Some of those open spaces, in addition, inside the track would be a pregnant area for a community that is devoid of athletic space. We struggle every year, begging the school to extract land to give us room for our 375 children participating in our activity. It would be, I think, something that the initiative agrees can say. Thank you.
I'm Jennifer Lawrence, and I live in Plymouth Point community, which is very agricultural and, um, statutory. And my concern about this is the infrastructure that we have. When we come down to Florida, like the end of our work day, it can take us 15 minutes to make a left here and turn out the bridge right. We belong to, um, the agricultural territory, which are a little way. Several of these, there's a huge accident that directs us back, you know, to the other direction. So, I think in deciding on what to do in this project, we need to decide how we're going to make that, uh, because of how the people who live where this, what is affected by this. And I think we really need to consider how we're going to make it easier for us and safer for us. And what about even having sidewalks, people walking down the street? More trailhead, that could be a danger to the kids that, you know, live in the neighborhood that's been along there. So, I just ask that you really take some time to think about everything, save for lower the speed limits, add left-hand turn lanes, anything that you can do to make this , I mean, just easier for us, would be appreciated. Thank you.
I just want to make one thing clear, our economy is helping to work here, Mr. Hyden and all his horses. Thank you. Are you kidding me? Don't make jokes here. I don't have all the resources he's given us, speakers, promoting this.
Obviously, that was not a comment, excuse me, that was not a comment that was germane to the discussion here. So, we're not going to keep repeating it. We don't need to hear it again. It, it provided nothing. It provided, it provided no meaningful contribution to what we're here about today. So, is there anyone here else here that wishes to speak that has not spoken yet? Okay, is there anyone here that wishes to come forward a second time? Okay, well, come on up here and, so we can pick you up on the mic.
Just been with the township. I'm Alice Takachik. I live on Ash Court, but been with the township here for 25 years or thereabouts. And just something to consider is, I lived right down the street from DRC there in Livonia. And some of the things, I guess you got to consider for the residents that live near or would live near the prospective track is that at night, when DRC was operating, you could see the lights, and I probably lived about a mile away, so you could see the lights, you could hear the noise, you could smell, you know, on certain nights, certain smells. So, I mean, I get, I get it, I get the money, I get, you know, sir, you know, you can put something worse, and I guess you probably could, you know? But something just to consider as a homeowner in the township that's been here for 23 years and has moved here from Canton, like a lot of other residents, is because of the community. It's because of what Plymouth Township stood for. And when I was raising my daughter, it was a community that I could be proud of, that had many family-friendly functions that just, I mean, you can't ask for a better community. So, I really think you got to really consider all the things that they talked about, about, about the cruelty to animals, about the congestion, which could maybe be fixed. But I'm telling you, late at night, that's all I could see was a DRC right there. That's all I could hear all night long. So, all summer long, guess what you residents are going to be listening to? You're going to be listening to that. So, just something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I had pretty much made my points, but I just wanted to make one more comment after that episode there by the Economic Development Coordinator. The fact that you allowed him to threaten the, the community members by, with his position, but then you didn't allow that man to speak his mind on what he did, and as he sat down, he stuck his tongue out at the rest of us. I think it's very clear what this, this group is going to decide, and I think it's really sad for the community members that that kind of behavior is tolerated here.
What the heck are you talking about? I'm talking about exactly what you said. It's ringing online. It's disgusting.
Okay. This, this is a very good example why I've asked already three times to have respect for one another. It takes one person...
But just remember, yeah, I know. You wanna get up and talk, come on and talk. But, yeah, leave it alone. Uh, so, that's a key piece. I back up to Ridge Road, right down the street from this facility. I've known these gentlemen for a long time. They're not bullshitting when they're talking about the, the kinds of stuff that they wanna do for this township. This is not just, they're not in it for themselves. They're in it for us. And for me, I raised my whole family right down the street from this facility. I'm very much into, to, to this because I've seen, guess what? I can put something worse in there and I'll make every one of you cry with some of the buildings and stuff I can put in to go in this spot. Thank you.
Hi there. Uh, Bob McCurdy, uh, Plymouth Township President, one two seven five Haver, uh, Haverhill Drive. Um, I'm also the vice president of Plymouth Rain Soccer Club. Uh, and I represent over three hundred and fifty children who play in our community and bring benefit to our community. Um, I was actually, at first, after we talked about this, when we learned about the community use agreement and the potential for that, I wanted to. Um, if, it's my understanding that your guys' job tonight is only to sign us to the treasures for consideration based on the, uh, uh, example statutes being breached, in her opinion. Um, I would encourage you guys to do that and let those, let, let go to the township, uh, to its needs where it can be dispensed and maybe the agreement can be reached. I want to hear the powers and operations of the council. That's incredibly beneficial for our three hundred and seventy-five children who could use those fields Monday through Thursdays and Sundays. Uh, some of those open spaces, if, uh, in addition, uh, inside the track would be a pregnant area for a community that is devoid of athletic space. We struggle every year, begging the school to let us land to get us room for our three hundred and seventy-five children participating in an activity. Uh, it would be, I think, something that the community should reconsider. Thank you.
I'm John Williams and I live in Plymouth Point community, which is very unretrograde and, um, statutory. And my concern about this is the infrastructure that we have. When we come down to it, I know that we have a work day, it can take us fifteen minutes to collect your townhouse return. We belong to, um, your territory, the territory of the other way. Several of these, there's a huge accident that directs us back, you know, to the other direction. So I think in deciding from what doing this project, we need to decide how we're going to make that, uh, because of the people who live where this, where it is affected by this. And I think we really need to consider how you're gonna make it easier for us and safer for us. Uh, what about even having side lanes, people walking down the street? More trailhead, that could be a danger to the kids that, you know, live in the neighborhood that are along there. So I just ask that you really take some time and think about everything this thing for, lower the speed limits, uh, add left turn lanes. Anything that you can do to make this, I mean, uh, just easier for us would be appreciated, thank you.
I just want to make sure one thing, for our economy to help me to work here, Mr. Hyden, all these courses. Thank you. Are you too happy? Don't make a joke here. Only since he's been our speaker, so, promoting this.
Obviously, that was not a comment, excuse me, that was not a comment that was germane to the discussion here. So we're not gonna keep repeating it, we don't need to hear it again. It, it provided nothing, it provided, it provided no, uh, meaningful contribution to what we're here about today. So is there anyone here else here that wishes to speak that has not spoken yet? Okay, is there anyone here that wishes to come forward a second time? You could, okay, well, come on up here and, so we can pick you up on the mic.
Just been with the township, I'm Alice Takachik, I live on Ash Court, but been with the township here for twenty-five years or thereabouts. And just something to consider is, uh, I lived right down the street from DRC there in Livonia. And some of the things, I guess you gotta consider, uh, for the residents that live near or would live near the perspective, uh, track, is that at night, uh, when DRC was, uh, operating, you could see the lights. And I probably lived about a mile away, so you could see the lights, you could hear the noise, you could smell, uh, you know, on certain nights, certain smells. So, I mean, I get, I get it, I get the money, I get, uh, you know, sir, uh, you know, you can put something worse and I guess you probably could, you know? But something just to consider as a homeowner in the township that's been here for twenty-three years and has moved here from Canton, like a lot of other, uh, residents, is because of the community. It's because of what Plymouth Township stood for. And when I was raising my daughter, uh, it was a community that I could be proud of, that had many family-friendly functions that, uh, just, I mean, you can't ask for a better community. So I really think you gotta really consider all the things that they talked about, about, about the cruelty tables, about the congestion, which could maybe be fixed. But I'm telling you, late at night, that's all I could see was a DRC right there. That's all I could hear all night long. So all summer long, guess what you residents are gonna be listening to? You'll be listening to that. So just something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, I had pretty much made my points, but I just wanted to make one more comment.
Okay.
Um, after that episode there by the Economic Development Coordinator. Uh, the fact that you allowed him to threaten the, the community members by, with his position, but then you didn't allow that man to speak his mind on what he did. And as he sat down, he stuck his tongue out at the rest of us. I think it's very clear what this, this group is gonna decide. And I think it's really sad for the community members that that kind of behavior is tolerated here.
I'm talking about exactly what you said. It's ringing online.
Okay. This, this is a very good example why I've asked already three times to have respect for one another. It takes one person to have a disrespectful comment, which I will have to agree with. And then that causes what I would call a nice diversity of opinion. We're trying to be patient, understand everybody's position. It takes one negative comment and the whole thing falls apart. So I apologize for what he had said. I frankly couldn't hear the whole thing, even though he said it twice. So I don't know who else heard it up here, but it was inappropriate. Anyone else that wishes to speak before we close the clo- uh, the, uh, public comments? Okay, last one. Okay. We're gonna close it after this last comment.
Uh, my name again is Jeff Peters. Um, somebody brought up the lights situation a few minutes ago. Um, I'm on the Board of Trustees of a high school, uh, Ann Arbor-Gregory-Rochard High School. We do not have lights on our football field. The closest neighbors are four tenths of a mile away. The Ann Arbor Township Planning Commission will not let us put lights on our football field because of noise, lights, et cetera, even though that would be done at nine-thirty, the way to the ten o'clock every night, on a very nominal number of nights per year. So that's something to consider, what that last person talked about, about lights, noise, and et cetera, and that it does travel quite extensively. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will close the public hearing at nine-ten. One more, okay. Okay. She hasn't, okay, go ahead.
Hi, Anna Steele. I do live in Plymouth Township and I understand the PUD process quite clearly because we went through it with the Elks Club. So I have respect for the process and understand it. One thing that I'm asking you to take into consideration as we're talking about each and every individual item of the eight, meeting the criteria, are that it's not just always about money and a tax base and what else we might get. Because that's been brought up multiple times today. And I know that doesn't really fit in, but when the township supervisor says, can you just pass it up to our level so we can hammer these things out? That's a little concerning to me and I don't understand that. Um, second of all, when we talk about developing every single space in this township, there's something that makes money. That big hospital over there, it's extra light, that doesn't generate money for the community. Is that correct? I'm not really asking the question. It doesn't, it doesn't.
Yeah, you, you addressed the commission, not anyone else in there, okay.
I understand, and I, and I said, I apologize, I, I don't want the answer from him.
Okay.
So, because we know the answer. So I just would like you to take into consideration that everything is about money. It's also about people, residents, animals, and every other thing. And I know we have to fulfill the PUD requirements, but to ask for it to be pushed to the next level and that for someone who is part of the, our, our economic development, to be one of the most disrespectful people who came up here today, again, disappointing.
Okay, thank you. So we will close the public hearing at, uh, at nine-thirteen. So, couple of questions. Uh, well, first of all, I guess I can ask the applicant, did you have any, um, comment, retort on what you've heard? I had some notes that I've taken.
If I may, I, I'd like to address some of the comments that were brought up. Bob, would you be so kind as to open the, uh, folder labeled Images under NDAPT for me?
Oh, we, and, and we have to make sure we turn our mics back on.
So if you will open the image labeled JP one and JP two.
JP one and JP two. There's no image.
Okay. All right, I apologize, I appear to have missed a couple of files in here. Um, would you go back and look in the video folder for a moment? No, not this drive, uh, go back to the, uh, ND, yeah. Are there any, uh, still images in the video folder? All right, nope, there are none. Okay, my apologies. Uh, if you'll go back to the Images folder and open up the View of Site for me. Yep. So this is just a still shot from one of the animations, so you can get a slightly better look, uh, at the site. So, uh, to start with, I wanted to have some remarks on the impact to the environment for this site. I'm a civil engineer, I've been involved in the development of this particular property, uh, for the last six or seven years. PEA Group was the engineering firm that worked with Hellside Development that originally brought forth the, uh, condominium that is currently plotted for this piece of land. So, right now, if this project goes away, the next type of project that comes in here would likely be a heavy industrial, uh, project because that's what this property is, is currently zoned for and approved for. So this land that you're looking at right now, even, even if we developed all of the areas for future parking, uh, you're probably looking at a total impervious percentage of about sixty percent. Whereas Laura had pointed out earlier, that entire area you're looking at could virtually be paved if this were to go forward as an industrial development. And that is what is actually approved for currently. Uh, that type of a development is typically eighty to eighty-five percent impervious. Now, the pond to the north, which has been designed for the detention for the site, is sized correctly to handle that kind of runoff. But, uh, in terms of impact, this will be a much lower impact to the Johnson Creek uh, than, than anything else that could possibly come in here. So that's item one. And then, without getting into, uh, deep details, um, talking about the traffic on the adjacent roads, obviously.
Excuse me, before you get into traffic.
Sure.
Um, is, because we're kind of on still the topic of the Johnson Creek.
Mm-hmm.
So one of the points, uh, was about this twenty, uh, twenty-five foot setback. So can you explain a little bit about, because the question was raised, why twenty-five feet?
So there, the, the, a good percentage of the site, I believe it's about forty-one percent, is designated by Eagle, which is the, uh, Environment, Great Lakes and Engineering Division at the state of Michigan. So they are designated as, um, wetlands. So that means that they cannot be developed, they have to be preserved and protected as wetlands. So typically, uh, communities add a protection onto their wetlands and they call it a buffer zone. Uh, Plymouth Township is similar to a lot of communities in Wayne County that do this. So typically what that means is you have to maintain a twenty-five foot band of green space around the edge of your wetlands. That means you can't just put, uh, you know, a road right up against the edge of the wetlands. You have to give it at least a little bit of a green space. And that reduces the amount of impact that a road or a paved parking area or a building would have on, on that protected wetland. So, uh, this site has been designed with that twenty-five foot buffer in mind, so everything is, is pulled away from all the wetland areas to meet that criteria.
So if we're in what I would call the over, uh, over, uh, overview of the whole water, because that was raised up. So what, are you, and, and this is early and this is more of a site plan issue than what we're here for today, but it was raised several times. So from the best of your knowledge, at this point, before, before you get into the detailed engineering, are you planning on doing any water gardens with the parking that is there?
One of the, uh, criteria that, um, the planning has, has added as a suggestion for you guys to include within your approval. So there was a list of conditions of approval that Laura Ha Ha has recommended that you implement in, in your approval, should you grant it tonight. One of those items was to create a rain garden. We've got plenty of space to do so, we certainly would be willing to do that. Um, and we could provide that additional enhancement to the green space. So typically, uh, at a, at an event site like this, you have, uh, a daily amount of parking that is needed and that is what's represented in the permanent paved parking area. And then you create what you call overflow parking for special events. And those would be things like Derby Day or one of the other Triple Crown events. So those aren't usually used all that much. And in this case, the, uh, ownership has committed to really investing in low, low-impact design. And, uh, you know, that's, that's a blessing because it does come with a cost. And a lot of, a lot of industrial-type developers are not willing to invest those dollars. But what we're looking at doing is, uh, reinforcing some of the areas with what's called grass pave. And, uh, that is literally a synthetic grid that is placed in the ground. And then, uh, in, typically if you're making a parking lot, you take all the grass and the topsoil off. You roll it out, you put an aggregate base down, and then you put either your concrete or your asphalt on top of that. Instead of doing that in these overflow parking areas, we've used this grass pave material, which is a plastic substrate, couple inches thick, that will lay on top of the aggregate, and then you fill the holes in it with dirt and you plant grass in it. So, except for those two, three days a year when you need extra parking, it is lawn. And it, uh, water runs off and, and soaks into it just like any other lawn. But in case of an emergency, a fire truck can roll over it without sinking into the ground. And then if you need extra parking, all you have to do is mow that area a little bit shorter. And for an event where you need a, a, a large amount of extra parking, you have nice, safe, uh, parking spaces available.
Yeah, we've had, we have that kind of situation in several areas in the township and it's worked out well.
Right.
Can you speak a little bit, another person, and raise the issue about washing the horses and what happens to that water?
Yeah, so we, uh, the ownership has, uh, asked that we use some of the pond water rather than fresh potable water for washing the horses. And, uh, what we would create is a drainage leach field. So the, the barn is, is far away from either one of the ponds. So we would be pumping water from the pond over to the horse wash area. And that horse wash area would likely be inside the paddock or right immediately adjacent to the barn. And that area would contain, uh, an infiltration bed. So you see this, uh, sometimes in, in low-impact pavement design where they talk about pervious pavement. It allows the wash water to drop through the pavement and soak into the ground underneath. And then the natural cycles of water recharge will serve to, uh, take care of the water and also treat it against, uh, any bacteria, bacteria or other contaminants that are in the water.
And, uh, um, I guess you, well, are there any water issues anyone wants to discuss, just the water, before we move on to the next topic? Okay, you were going to talk about traffic.
Yeah, I was gonna talk about traffic. So yes, we, we, we all know that the roads around there are already, um, heavily trafficked and any business that you bring in is going to add more traffic to it. Uh, we're, we're preparing a traffic impact assessment that will be provided to, um, planning and to the Board of Trustees for review. So you get a chance to look at that, should it indicate that some additional, uh, improvements are required on the road in order to support this additional use. Obviously, those things could then be mandated to be incorporated into the future engineering drawings. But from, uh, what ownership knows about the, the running of the track at the existing facility, on a daily basis, the number of trips in and out of there are fairly low-impact. Uh, it's not a high-volume traffic business. On certain days, like for the Triple Crown, you're gonna see a lot of visitors that you don't normally see. On those days, you're, you're gonna have some extra traffic. But it's, it's the same kind of thing that you see at the high school on a football game night. You know, a bunch of people come in and they all leave at the same time. So you have temporarily, uh, overtaxed the ability of the road to contain the traffic and you have gridlock for a while. So those things would, would occur, but they're, they're not going to be very often. Um, and the breakage fee, if I'm, if I'm correct, is actually mandated by the state of Michigan again to go for paying for the additional police presence that you would need to secure a site like this and to handle traffic direction on, uh, heavy event evenings when you might need extra police out on the roadways, uh, directing traffic. So, uh, in terms of light and noise, this is probably one of the less noisy and light, uh, polluting types of uses that could occupy this site. So other, other than security lighting at night, you're not gonna see a lot of light trespass. Everything is quite far away from the roads and it is naturally secluded by these very large areas of wetlands that we have. Uh, the closest residences to the, the developed area of the site are the, um, mobile home community to the south and that is about a thousand feet away. So there's an enormous existing natural buffer between those residences and the developable area on this site. So just by, by virtue of that situation, you're gonna have pretty good sound and light attenuation before it reaches and bothers the neighbor. In addition, technology today has come a long way. Uh, LED lights are way less intrusive than the old lights that we all grew up with at stadiums and concert venues. So they don't spread as far, they're not as intense, and they don't create as much of a problem. So, um, I, I do believe that, that this impact would be a lot lower in those terms to the community than any other type of development that come, could be potentially put into this site.
So am I correct in, in presuming that, uh, when the DRC was in operation, uh, that lighting was a different technology than what's currently available?
Those would have been those old, very strong halogen fixtures that you could see for miles.
Okay. And, Ms. Howell? Ms. Howell?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you haven't, uh, had an opportunity to look at in any great depth the photometric, uh, plan that was given to us this evening?
No, we would take a closer look at that during the site plan review process.
Okay. Other comments that you might wanna make at this point, before I turn over the question?
I, I, I think I've covered most of the salient points on which I took notes, but I'm certainly available to answer questions if any of the commissioners would like to ask some.
Yeah, there was one comment that an individual made, and I took it word, pretty much word, word that it's up to them, referring to the applicant, about some of these community benefits. But really, in fact, the PUD is sort of like a contract between the township and the applicant. And there's, as Supervisor Ahizy had mentioned, there's negotiation for that.
Absolutely.
So there is a contract there, so it's not all up to you. I mean, there's gonna be give and take, obviously. And I'm presuming that if this were approved, that you would, uh, negotiate in good faith, as I would hope the township would as well.
I would, I would assure you that is our course of, that's the direction that we plan on traveling.
All right. It's open to the commission?
Um, I think, um, a couple of the most important comments made today relative to the traffic situation, um, in that corner of the township. And I realize that PUDs don't govern traffic. But the traffic at Five Mile and Ridge is a real problem. It happens multiple times a day, um, irregardless of how this land might be used. I'm also concerned, there's been comments, um, as Ahizy mentioned, the efforts of the township regarding improving Five Mile. Ridge Road also needs to be improved as part of this development because the natural flow of traffic will be that some of the people will go down Ridge Road. Um, and the comments that were made by the resident at Plymouth Point are very apropos for this area. So, uh, my request would be that, um, if we take this forward, that we make a appeal to everybody involved. The township, um, the state senate, the state House of Representatives, the MITC, certainly to Wayne County Road Commission, that we make a serious effort at fixing Five Mile Road and also improving Ridge Road in time it in such a way that it would be underway or completed when you all are, uh, up and running at full speed.
Let me just ask a question related to that of Ms. Howell. And I think you do go to all or most of the MITC, uh, meetings? Yeah, so I remember Gary Roberts had, uh, come before us a few years back to talk about the roads and what they were trying to do. Were, was Ridge Road included in that at all? It seems to me like they were going to try to raise the classification of that road. Do you have any recollection of that?
There are definitely improvements planned for Ridge Road, yes.
Okay.
Yes, to change the designation of it.
Well, we know at this point, like we do with the twenty-five, but it, I, I, I asked that question because I think it's on the radar, but what happens to it, I, you know, who knows?
Key consideration for people living in that part of town.
Commissioner, so you have any comment at this point?
Um, kind of like what they were talking about with your commitment to the community benefit plan. Someone had raised a question that you don't have a commitment to the green initiatives that you mentioned, um, in your proposal. And I'm assuming that's the same type of situation where that would be negotiated with, should this go forward, that would be part of the negotiations with Plymouth Township, to get a more firm commitment, not just a suggestion or, or that we might do it or we'll look into it, but then you would actually, whatever those happen to be, whether it's additional rain gardens or other types of preventative men- or, um, preventative methods to reduce the stormwater runoff or things like that, that that's all part of the, that's all part of the contract.
Uh, yes, and in fact, if, in, in the text of Laura's recommendations, she did state that the plan- the planned use of geothermal and solar energy and low-impact design that we've already stated the intention of implementing be actually written into the PUD agreement, so that they're part of the contract that developer has with the township. Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Can we, do you have anything? Bob?
I have nothing.
Chairman Spolsky, I have one other comment. A lot of conversation about green spaces and preserving natural areas and so forth, which is something very near and dear to my heart. I've helped the Friends of the Rouge, I've been to some of the rain garden events. I, I'm not sure that, that we've fully conveyed just how much of this site will be retained in its natural state. Nora or Bob, could you bring up the planner's report, the original page two, that had the layout? The point I want to make is when you see this, is that, just go to page two, I think it is. So if you look at this site, all that area on the, on the middle right and the lower right and the lower left that's dark, that's all wetland. Isn't that correct, Ms. Howe?
Yeah. Trustee, could you go to the previous slide? That will have the unfiltered aerial, one up.
There you go.
This one?
No, go back to the one you were just at a minute. There you go.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Is that, that, that shows the same area. Is that what you want, Laura?
Yeah, so everything that's kind of in the hash there, you can see the bottom and then wrapping around Johnson Creek to the east of the barn, yes, all of that. Those are protected areas that will remain untouched as part of this development.
And it's 41 percent of the entire acreage under question here, correct?
Correct, 41.7.
Yeah. And then just to the left of it, on the other side of Johnson Creek, there will be a warehouse area going in there, but I believe almost 60 percent of that land will also be green wetlands, controlled wetlands that will face upright against to the same Johnson Creek area. So the point I'm making is that there is a lot of, of wetland and woodland preservation that's already on-site in this development, which also will serve as a buffer to the Oakhaven manufactured housing community, which is to the south of the site. So the concern is a very valid one, but I want to make sure that everybody understands just what we are actually getting if we go forward with this. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would just add to that. I know people like to preserve green space, but it's privately owned property, and it's, something's going to get built there. You know, the previous plans that unfortunately were unsuccessful had called for eight, eight, you know, sizable buildings. And, you know, it's, it's private property, and something's going to get built eventually. So pick your poison.
Any further discussion? Questions, comments? Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, beforehand, though, I just want to reiterate that us as a planning commission, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming here. We sincerely do appreciate you taking the time to come here in person, to write letters. We don't take this job casually. We do listen. We really do. And we try to listen to your concerns and listen to, to the developers and try to mitigate and try to make compromises to the best of our abilities. But we are not the State of Michigan. We cannot say whether or not horse racing is legal in the state. That's not up to this commission here. We don't get to decide a lot of things. We don't get to decide how big the roads are, how much traffic is there. But what we do have is a planner's report that has eight different eligibility standards that, in my opinion, this development meets. And therefore, I recommend approval to the Board of Trustees for the PUD option for the Northville Downs of Plymouth Planned Unit Development, provided that the following items are submitted to the township for review prior to consideration by the Board of Trustees. A, that a traffic impact assessment is provided, and the applicant has agreed to this, that a revised PUD, PUD eligibility plan, which notes and details the following, that a secondary access road be installed per the fire department's review. Again, the applicant has agreed to this. That the existing detention ponds be planted with a native seed mix to improve the stormwater infiltration aesthetics and plant diversity of the site. The general location of a rain garden is identified to be installed with educational signage. A sidewalk from the main entrance on Ridge Road is provided to the main entrance of the facility. A fully accessible pedestrian nature path with, with a minimum of eight feet is installed through the publicly zoned lands with a paved surface or boardwalk if necessary, and an ADA accessible parking space added to the parking lot, which must also be paved. A spur to a scenic area of the Johnson Drain and community signage for the parking lot and path be provided. All unbuilt portions of the site be ceded and maintained as lawn seat areas. Additional landscaping throughout the site is installed beyond minimum ordinance requirements to be determined during the site development phase. That a lighting and noise mitigation plan must be provided and include restrictions such as primary lighting for the racetrack and parking lot will not be in operation when the track is not in use, controlled via a timed system. Further, if the PUD option is approved by the Board of Trustees, a solid waste management plan for the disposal of animal waste and an emergency evacuation plan for weather events and other emergencies must be provided as part of the PUD development plan and contract.
There's support?
Support.
Is that it first?
Move by Commissioner Barberina and seconded by Commissioner Itzel to recommend to the
Board of Trustees the PUD development, subject to set conditions. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. We have the monthly report. Were there any questions on our monthly report?
Not for me.
Not for me.
I think we can just adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Greger to adjourn the meeting at 9:37. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we adjourn.